United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're so grateful for your love for us, Lord, and forgiveness, Lord, as we come together tonight, Lord, as mayor and council members, and our C crew, Lord, and our staff, and all the citizens of BB, Lord, I pray that you would be with us, Lord, and we'll maybe reach out to you for guidance, Lord, as we make decisions for community, the public board, and just bless this time with Christ's name.
Amen.
All right, first on the agenda this evening is Michael Westergren, the commander of the...
On the road.
Oh, thank you.
We're all here.
Yeah, they're all here, I saw. Alderman Duggar.
Here.
Alderman Stark.
Here.
Alderman Lindsey.
Here.
Alderman Cormick.
Here.
Alderman Lightfoot.
Here.
Alderman Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Robinson. Okay, Michael Westergren, commander of Post 91, would like to speak to you all about the Be The One event. There is a flyer on your table.
Hi, everybody, I think you know me, I think Carol wants to get out of here real fast, don't you? Well, as Carol said, I am the commander of American Legion Post 91 here at BB. I've been for twenty years since we recharged. Primary initiative in American Legion is Be The One, which is to prevent veteran suicide. Our post has taken up that initiative to reduce the rate of veteran suicide. We're actually working through a program called Columbia Protocol to lessen the stigma associated with veteran mental health, to help them seek treatment. The Be The One program is a program that started from Columbia University, and then American Legion picked up that program to empower everyone to take appropriate action when a veteran or service member is at risk. The Columbia Protocol uses what they call the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale. It's a suicide risk screening program. Now, the suicide in Arkansas is actually slightly above national average, with about eighteen of a hundred thousand that commit suicide. But our veterans, there's about thirty-seven of a hundred thousand that commit suicide every year. That's unimaginable, and that's why we're here, to stop that. It's our number-one priority, and Post 91 has taken that up. We do a wellness check, we call our veterans on a regular basis, just to check on them, to make sure that they're okay. If there's anything we can do for them, refer them to the proper agencies. Some things you need to know, September is Suicide Awareness Month. Our high school HOSA club has been out, actually working with the kids out there, and you see these ribbons, you've got them on your desk, that's just suicide awareness. But what we're doing, what we want to do, and what we're actually going on right now, is we're offering a modified Columbia Protocol training here in BB, at the high school, to anybody that wants to come. It uses a series of questions, six questions, that are asked to evaluate the risk of a person, not just a veteran, but any person. It's very similar to our buddy check, and it empowers individuals to be able to ask the right question. So, just wanted to let you know, and I really, I've talked to the fire department, I've talked to the police department, I've talked to the EMS, we've talked to the veterans in the area here, we're talking to healthcare workers, we're talking to anybody that'll give us an audience. October twentieth, we have two folks coming from Columbia University to actually provide that training that they developed, and they're gonna be doing it at the high school out there. We've got the auditorium all day that day. We have at least two events on that Monday. We'll probably have one more event, I was gonna talk to the city council, see if you'd like to have your fire department, police department, and other first responders have their own private training here on the twenty-first. I can have those same instructors here to give that. But right now, we're not just targeting veterans. Our target population is the military veterans, but it's also the youth. You're aware of the probable suicides that we had last year. We're also looking at the disenfranchised, the marginalized, the powerless, and the homeless. And finally, we're looking at the elderly and shut-ins. I know our police department responds to those calls all the time. We want to make anybody who's willing to listen and take the training able to ask the right questions, to be able to evaluate the risk of suicide, and know how to refer to them. We know that asking the right questions does not prompt someone to consider suicide. If they're considered suicide, we're stepping in to try and stop that cycle. The Columbia Protocol is a very thorough ninety-minute training program, it's gonna happen on the Monday, at least two sessions at the high school, if you want us to do another private session from the instructors Tuesday, Tuesday, October twenty-first, we'd love to have it. Finally, on November first, we're gonna do a Be The One Walk, it's for our veterans in the military, we're gonna do it at ASU BB. On the first of November, which is a Saturday, they're gonna do a walk to recognize all of the lives that we've lost to suicide, and to make everybody aware of the Be The One program, and how we, the American Legion, is trying to reach out and empower our veterans to not succumb to suicide, how to ask the questions, how to ask for help. So, is there any questions I can answer for you? All right, thank you for your time, Mayor, city council.
Can we make sure we get this posted on all our social media platforms the week before, and I don't know if we can put it on our city calendar, and, I don't know, it'd be nice if we had a link on our website, that they could click and get the information. I don't know how thorough we are with our, I know we got the new website, so I don't know, if we can get them to add something on the website. I just think that...
I'll get you that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I think it'd be great to promote it.
And our next guest speaker is from Comcast, and it's Solomon Graves, and he's here just to do a little introduction to the city, and tell us what's going on.
Good evening, Mayor Robertson, and members of the council. My name is Solomon Graves, I'm the government affairs manager for Comcast Local Market. As was said, just wanted to introduce myself to each of you, had the opportunity to speak to the mayor a few weeks ago, in advance of some work we are preparing to do here in the city of BB. So, we are preparing to do some work along Highway sixty-four, which we are extremely excited about. We will be bringing our high-speed internet service here, that will initially serve local businesses along sixty-four, bringing them opportunities to not just unlock economic opportunities, but also bring, over time, residential access to the city. But what this will do, once we resolve pending permits with the electrical utilities here, will grow economic growth within the city, but this will expand, as you all know, in this digital age, opportunities for your businesses to grow. When we talk about economic growth in the twenty-first century, everything is predicated on their ability to access high-speed internet, and that is what we have been leaning into over the years, over these recent years at Comcast. Over the last three years, here in the state, we have invested over a hundred and thirty million dollars in our network, upgrading our infrastructure, expanding coverage, and enhancing our service reliability. When we talk about service reliability, we're proud of the fact that we experience across our network ninety-nine percent uptime. Nobody's perfect, but for us, perfection is ninety-nine percent of the time, our customers, if they're on our network, they are able to experience our service. Right now, we have deployed fifty-eight hundred miles of network infrastructure across the state, and as I said, our expansion will soon reach the city of BB. Currently, two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand approximate homes and businesses in the state of Arkansas have access to our residential and business services, and a hundred percent of our customers have access to speeds of one gig or more. Why does that gig speed matter? Again, when we talk about connectivity, not all speeds are equal, especially when we talk about commercial customers, they've gotta be competitive, whether it's point-of-sale your customers, your businesses, who are, have point-of-sale terminals, they're taking, they've got businesses, they're, they've got customers coming in, they've gotta be able to receive payments, get them in, get them out quick, whether it's individuals that are working remotely, video, they've gotta be able to transmit that video quick. Those speeds matter. A hundred percent of our customers, whether residential or business in the state, have access to speeds of a gig or more. Finally, something else that we're extremely proud about is the investments that we make in the communities that we serve. We just don't deploy infrastructure and walk away. We also invest in the communities where we deploy our infrastructure. We view ourselves as a community partner. So, whether it's partnering with youth-oriented organizations, local tech hubs, chambers of commerce, libraries, et cetera, veterans-oriented organizations such as VFWs, American Legions, or similar organizations, they are a part of our DNA, and have been part of our DNA since we were founded in Tupelo, Mississippi, in nineteen sixty-three. Our commitment includes our company-wide volunteerism initiative, we refer to as Team Up. In closing, I want to say that Comcast is not just about building a network, we're committed to building a long-term partnership with the city of BB. We're here, not just tonight, but moving forward, to commit to this community's growth, to being a part of your long-term resilience, and to being a part of your long-term digital opportunity. Because, again, when we talk about the city of BB's future, we understand that it is a part of making sure that you grow in the digital age. So, thank you for your time, and welcome any questions.
Anybody having questions?
Initially, commercial.
Yes, initially, commercial, and then we'll come back with subsequent deployments, and expand to residential segments of the community.
Okay.
Are you the point of contact?
It will be, I'll be point of contact for issues that any council member has, along with city departments. Also want to acknowledge my colleague, Rob Price, if there are any issues during the project itself, he'll be points of contact. We'll also have a construction partner on site, who will be points of contact for your utility department, handling issues around locates, those types of things, and we've provided that contact information to Mayor Robertson's staff already.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Next will be BB Water and Sewer, their financials were in your packet, Carol and Tommy are both here.
Motion to approve.
Say it. Have a motion, the second, to approve the financials for BB Water and Sewer, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is P and Z, and I'll let James take that. First is the preliminary plat?
Yeah, preliminary plat for Cherry Street addition, that Dayton's work to build. We've gone through several iterations on this drainage problem, and we know the greatest people have worked out in this project, they've gone over the, to take care of this drainage and help mitigate problems down the street in South Fork.
So, planning zoning's already approved it?
They have approved it, recommended it for approval.
The only, Cherry Street's not very wide.
Pardon me?
What about the width of the road on Cherry Street? I just know that, like, it's just not a very wide road, is that gonna...
Your guess was correct. There's been no, there's been no plan's made, it's been widened, et cetera.
Three quarters of the way down, it's a decent road.
Yes.
And then it narrows.
It narrows, so...
And then it narrows. It's probably a fourth of what's left, is where it narrows, and then...
Yeah. The only, I just...
To widen it, we're gonna have to address, if you were to widen it, it would have to be addressed to the property owners, and I'm assuming it would probably need to be addressed off of your side, and I don't know how the other property owners would feel if we did that, but I looked at that today, matter of fact.
Yeah, I was, I was actually out there a couple, that's the only reason why I realized...
I would say at least five foot on each side, or ten foot, to make it comparable to what's there now, that two vehicles could pass.
Would there be homes all the way down to that narrow end?
Yeah, it's gonna go all the way down, isn't it?
Yeah.
And some of it's gonna get into your drainage, right?
Some of what?
Some of it, and the narrow end could get into your drainage area, or is it gonna be housed all the way down?
There'll be houses all the way down Cherry, till it turns there...
Okay.
Onto Alabama.
Yeah, some's gonna be addressed on the narrow end.
Just didn't, I mean, I just didn't, I mean, how do, how do we address that? Is that something that we gotta, I mean, 'cause it's gonna affect homeowners that are already out there, or...
There's no homeowners.
I was gonna say, there's nobody out there, so... Just a handful, really, yeah. I mean, there's local traffic, but, and there's some buses, there's a bus route to headset street.
Yeah, when we did the last improvement there, we did that, just so for the bus.
Is there, was there any grant that we could use to pay for that? I don't know.
How many lots are over there on that plat?
We're adding thirty-two. I mean, if water's addressed, and it's, and you know, that's all good, like I said, the only, the only concern that I would have is if we, if we need to widen that road, if we don't need to, we don't need to, if we do, we do, I just...
We did.
Just sitting there.
Especially down there when you get close to Alabama, that really narrows.
And we're gonna have significant, next year, road improvements that we're gonna need to do. We're gonna have to do work on Forest Street, we're gonna have to do work on Lloyd Henderson, we're gonna need to do some work through Cherry, so a lot of things that we're gonna have to do to improve.
I mean, like I said, I'm good with approving it, moving forward, I just know that that, I'm not trying to throw a wrench in your plan, I mean, I'm not, I just know that the road was...
The problem in widening that to what's existing prior to where it narrows.
You talking about changing the center line of the road?
Huh?
Are you talking about changing the center line of the road?
No, if we look at all both sides, we can keep the center line where it is, right?
Yeah, the reason I ask is, we start setting our utilities out there, and the center line changes five feet or something, or we take it all on one side, then I need to know that now.
Well, we need to know, right away it's through there now, we need to know what utilities are through there now, so that we could address that, you know, it's not gonna be a problem if we take it on both sides, or if we're gonna have to get it on one side.
There may be already utilities there that don't allow that.
Right. So, we can look at that between now and next meeting, figure out how we're gonna get there.
Well, I'm not trying to push on the gas here and say we need to get something done now, but we, we had planned on starting this project in about a week, maybe a week and a half.
Well, Tommy, your sewer's right down the middle of the road. Where's the water?
Other side.
Pardon?
It's on the opposite side of the road.
Is it in the ditch?
Yeah, well, I've known it here about the war, I've heard it.
Okay. Finally, they're in the ditch. We'll have to look at that. I don't know what else is out there. Have you done, you haven't done any type of one calls or anything yet?
No, no, not a, not a physical one call, I kinda know what's out there, and there's a lot of area that there's nothing out there.
Well, Jack, if you'll do the entire road, both sides, then we'll know.
Yeah, and, and like I said, the plantings, I'm sure planting zoning already needed, there was something needed to be looked at, so as long as they're good with it, I'm good with it, I just wanted to bring it up, 'cause I knew the road got narrow.
It's as narrow in that area as Cypress.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion, the second, to approve the preliminary plat for Cherry Street addition, thirty-two lots, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen, Jen?
Okay, this is BB after life, live in this rezone, the new place she lives in, and rents out on North First Street, gives in a R1 zone as of two thousand and six, when the new zone was built, so it's a non-performing structure. If it was destroyed fifty, more than fifty percent by fire, or stolen, or whatever, she would not be able to build that patch, it was a best of her, and she's asking for this rezone, the R2. Now, the whole other side of the street is open. The first side of the street is open.
So, planning and zoning approved it, right?
Yes, indeed.
I'll make a motion, we're your ordinance, number twenty-twenty-five fifteen, by title of...
Second.
I have a motion, the second, to read ordinance, number twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen, by title of... I have a motion as second to read ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen by title only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, an ordinance to amend the zoning map with response to the zoning classification of specific land areas within the city of Beebe, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, this is from R1 to R2 on property located at five oh one and five, five oh one and five oh three North Fur. I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as read.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Dugger?
Yes.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
Alderman Lindsey?
Yes.
Alderman McCormick?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman McLean?
Yes.
I need a motion to dispense with the second and third readings.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Dugger?
Yes.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
Alderman Lindsey?
Yes.
Alderman McCormick?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman McLean?
Yes.
I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Dugger?
Yes.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
Alderman Lindsey?
Yes.
Alderman McCormick?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman McLean?
Yes.
That motion passes. I think that's all that James has for us. Next is the clerk treasurers. The minutes were in your packet from the August eighteenth meeting.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion as second to accept the minutes from August eighteenth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Your financials were in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second to approve the financials for the city of Beebe. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's all I have, and Mayor, you're up.
Okay, so, you have R dot, a resolution twenty-five oh five. The correspondence, has everybody read this? All correspondence, kind of unexpected correspondence. And we did that study, and we requested a study, and they came back and told us everything was warranted for its left turn signal in Maine and thirty-one, unwarranted at McCon Street, warranted at Highway sixty-four, Dewit Henry Drive. And so I received this correspondence now, and you can, so I don't know, you have three projects. You can, you can choose one project as out of the three. You can choose, and only one at a time. So, after reading this, and after having some communications, conversation with Mr. Wooton and Mr. Wiley from the Highway Department, and still in communications with them, and more or less in negotiations with them, I don't have any other information at this time. So, I chose the Center Street, Highway sixty-four and three sixty-seven intersection for left turn signals, because all the turning lanes are already there. And so, to move forward with that project, they can move forward with, with us passing of a resolution. And they are calling this a program after this correspondence, IIP, where they're using federal highway funds program, where you can do a, a project up to one million dollars. And it would be eighty percent of highway federal funding and ten percent state, ten percent city. So, the project for the left turn signals at sixty-four and Dewit Henry would be our share of approximately ten thousand dollars unless something unexpectedly came in, which I don't foresee any utilities, because it's already been addressed. So, that's what the resolution would be denied to adopt that. Now, very complicated and complex at Maine and Highway thirty-one. And so, I called Mr. Wooton, had some conversation with him. He put me in contact with Mr. Wiley from his Highway Department, and we've had communications on that. So, they used the same program called IIP, and it would appear initially that that project would be the million-dollar project, and that the city would pay ten percent, and the state would pay ten percent. But that's not quite the way it is when you read the entire letter and the project. The project is five point, approximately a five point five million dollar project, they say. Now, they say the IIP program covers up to a million-dollar project. After that, then they want the local share to pay it all, which would be putting the city in paying four point four million dollars into left turn signals and lanes at Highway thirty-one, Maine and Dewit Henry. And so, I said, that's not happening. And I, and I spoke with the highway people that, you know, here we are, you're, you're putting us in a program. It's IIP where you're using federal money, and it's paying eighty percent, and you're paying ten, we're paying ten, and then you're factoring in the total cost and asking us to pay an additional four point four million dollars, not happening. We don't own the roads, they're not highway roads, they don't intersect a city street in any, any place. You have highway funds, you have funds available through taxes, you have funds available through fuel taxes, half-cent tax, property taxes, personal property taxes, registration taxes. So, I don't see us spending that money, and you spending nothing. And so, we've had some conversation, and it ended with, well, we could do a partner, possibly a partnership. And if the partnership means fifty-fifty, you're still at two point five million dollars. And so, with the highway, you owning the highways, and they're your highways. I don't see that happening. And when you have a congestion problem, and it continues to multiply, I don't know how you're going to handle it. So we came back again, and we talked about exactly how much could the city pay, maybe? I said, I don't know, I'd have to talk to the council about that. And so, we should throw out a number there, and then we'll go to possibly visit with the commission. I said, okay, we'll, we'll try to come up with something. I don't feel like it's our responsibility.
I guess I'm confused, because I thought the Highway Department had already committed to-
From, from the initial letter, that was, there was no money figures calculated in that. And so, then I received this, this letter. And so, I, I spoke to our city attorney, also, so he's doing some research. He's going to get back with me on what constitutes the authority for cities to expend money on highways, although it's in the city's limits, you know, we still have no authority over any of that. Can't even put up a speed limit sign.
So it sounds like to me the Highway Department is just reneged on what they originally told us.
Well, it's, it's, it's been added to.
It's money. So, and I, and I don't even know if this is possible, but why do we have to do a lot?
Yeah, why can't we do roundabout?
Why can't we do a roundabout? I was just fixing to say that, because-
All, all that, I've, I've read where Conway and some others are doing the same thing, and they're, they're faced with the same issues, and, and they're talking about roundabouts. Well, that can come back in our conversations, in our extended conversations, because we're only going to get one project for this year, and, and that's the one that we-
I do remember going to a class at municipal league, and it was on roundabouts. And they said that the total cost of one of them was about a million dollars. So if you cut that down, then we're back into the hundred thousand dollar range on ten percent. That would be feasible, and I'll be honest with you, I hated them at the beginning, but now driving through them, they're, they're really not that bad.
I, they're not bad, except when they get stacked up.
But, but I think if, I don't think you would get, I don't think that would get stacked up. I think you'd have a continuous flow.
Well, I, I mean stacked it when there's a roundabout, and then the next way, there's a roundabout. The next way, there's a roundabout.
But I think that could be, there's plenty of area right there at that spot, and I think that would be a, a solution that-
We could come back with them and with talks, and I can arrange for a visit, or maybe he can come and visit with all of us, and we can come up with some sort of solution to this that's affordable for everybody. But five me, five point five million dollars is not affordable.
No.
Yeah, they, the class we went to, they said the, and, and this was three years ago, I think, and they were, they were right at a million dollars to install. And I mean, with that, where it's at right there, there's, you're not really going to be impeding on much of anything. So that'd be like a prime location for it.
So, we can, we can do that. Well, I told him I'd get back with him, but I'd call Randigan, and I saw that, that researching is of where the legislation is that allows the city to be obligated for this amount of money.
You'd think they, I mean, once they put in the streetlights, do we take, we take control over that?
Once, once that they install signal lights, and they pay the initial cost of it, and we pay for the maintenance.
So they wouldn't care no matter what, so it's not like they would be saving any money if we did go that?
It should be nothing to them, I mean, it's, it would be all highway improvements.
Got you.
So that's where we're at, we can do this resolution, if you want, go ahead with this project.
And if we do the resolution for this project, the other one is just on the back burner for how long?
We only do one, one, one per year, so-
One per year?
I don't know if that means we, it says it's warranted if we just go into the next funding stage, or if we have to reapply. I would think that we would go to the next stage, but that's some more conversations that we need to have.
And true recommendation, we just go ahead with this first project?
Okay. I'll make a motion. Do you already have a resolution?
Yep, it's in your packet.
Yeah, I'll make a resolution to read by title only, or make a motion to read the resolution by title only.
Second.
I have a motion as second to read Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh five by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh five, a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Beebe to utilize federal aid monies for the following projects. Highway sixty-four B, Center Street, Highway three sixty-seven intersection improvements. Need a motion to adopt the, the resolution as read?
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Dugger?
Yes.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
Alderman Lindsey?
Yes.
Alderman McCormick?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman McLean?
Yes.
That passes.
The next thing I wanted to talk to you about would be, you know, we, we ordered that fire truck a couple of years ago, and it's up for delivery. The cost of the truck was one million seventy-nine thousand five forty-seven. And they sought financing for five years on it, as a lease purchase, approximately four point five percent interest, with a down payment of five hundred thousand, leaving approximately six hundred thousand dollars over a five-year period. We were down to approval of the sign and, and a resolution, and I talked to William today, and I talked to Carol. I said, what, what if, if you, you would approve this, that they make a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar down payment, they have the money set aside, then the dedicated county tax, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be paid at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and we make the cash payment of the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they pay the city back one hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and that is a windfall of eighty-two thousand dollars in interest back to the fire department. And if y'all would approve that, and if you want to do that, then they're not going to pay that interest, and that money will go back to the fire department.
Make a motion, we do it?
Second.
I have a motion as second that city council approves us to purchase the fire truck for one million dollars, seventy-eight, five forty-seven, seventy-six. Five hundred and fifty thousand will come out of the county fire tax as a down payment, and then they will make a yearly payment of a hundred and fifty thousand from the county fire tax money. The original payment will come out of the general fund. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Take approximately forty-eight months, or less.
The city is just making pennies on that money anyway, correct?
Yes, that, that, we're going to, that money's set aside each year. I mean, it comes in monthly, or quarterly, and, you know, it's obligated for fire departments to do such-
Yeah, I got you.
Financing with them. Anybody have anything else you want to talk about?
I just got one thing, it's for tomorrow night. I don't know if everybody's seen, I've been sharing on my Facebook, the see you before the poll at the auditorium from six-thirty to seven-thirty. It's going to be a good thing, what, get Faribault back on our canvas, and lord knows, we need it right now, so. I just want to make that public.
Where's that?
The auditorium.
Auditorium, six-thirty, seven-thirty.
Six-thirty?
Yes. Indoor, indoor or outdoor?
The auditorium.
We're hoping you guys stand up, not get a seat.
Got you. See you at the poll, you said?
Well, the next morning, they're having, see you at, this is see you before the poll, and then the next day, they're having, see you at the poll for the kids.
Got you. Tomorrow night, six-thirty?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Let's do it, John.
Say it.